Okay, seeing that the appointed time has arrived, the chair opens up the Wednesday, January 18th, 2023, meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board, being held here, Rockaway Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road, North Mashpee, Massachusetts. We're being broadcast live on channel, local channel 18, and streamed live on the Town of Mashpee website I just want to welcome everybody here tonight and let you know that you're being videoographed and recorded. And I invite you all to rise and join with me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is sanders, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business, we have a set of minutes from December 21st, 2022. I reviewed them. Does anybody have any additions or edits or comments? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes of December 21st, 22, as presented.
Obey.
So Dennis made the motion. Michael seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, so we have a public hearing to open at 7:10. That's going to be continued, but we do have to wait till 7:10 and 7:15 to do that. Jumping forward on the second page of our agenda, and if anybody needs a copy of the agenda, there's a meeting packet on the front table. And if there's anybody who wants to do any public comment, I do allow public comment throughout the meeting. You can either sign up for the public comment at the end or just raise your hand during the appropriate item. Board Engineer Report, we don't have anything, right?
Correct.
Okay. I guess, I guess under, all right, let's do Affordable Housing, Workforce Housing, under Old Business. So can you remind me what date you're targeting for a workshop on the ADUs, Evan?
We were looking at a February launch. So we're looking February or March. We haven't mobilized much of the effort yet. There are a few people I'm awaiting replies to who I'd like to participate in the workshop, but I think March is a feasible date at this point.
I think March is better because you might have some people traveling. And February, February is a big travel month.
And honestly, we have so much engagement likely upcoming for a town meeting and subsequent town meetings that, you know, I'm not opposed to an April or May workshop either, just, you know, in terms of prioritizing and granting orders of magnitude to these priorities. But we've been targeting March and have some flexibility.
Okay. And how's the HPP procurement going?
Final edits are essentially done and we'll be prepared to issue consultants and advertise at RFQ within the next week.
Great. And then in your packet, you'll see some documentation regarding the Regional Housing Strategy, which is a new initiative by the Cape Cod Commission. In the packet, you'll see a four-page, no, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, there's a page that says Regional Housing Strategy, right? Then the next, it's just weird because it's double-sided. The next page is the Housing Profile, and it's Mashpee. And I guess it's about, it's towards the second half of your packet. It's almost right in the middle. And the Housing Profile for Mashpee is three pages, and it's very geographic oriented. And so it starts with this, Karen, right?
Yes, I got it.
So we had a meeting. It was Michaela Wyman-Columbo, who's a select person, Evan, myself, Alan Isbits, who's the Chair of the Affordable Housing Committee, and three members of the Cape Cod Commission staff. And you don't know their names off the top of your head, do you?
Erin Perry, Deputy Director, Chloe Schaefer, Chief Planner, and one new staff person that I don't recall her name. I'll have to refresh my memory.
So we went through, one of the things we did was we went through the Housing Profile for Mashpee, and it's very draft. This is very draft. And I was hoping that you'd all kind of look at it. And especially what I'm interested in hearing from you is on the last page, there's a section on zoning. And it says Residential Development Ordinances, and it says, okay, it says accessory apartments, and multifamily housing by right, and inclusionary zoning. And I added to that list with them that day. I was talking about developments, transfer of development rights, you know, that OSID bylaw that we have that has some potential if tweaked. Oh, redevelopment, like if we had a redevelopment method. Evan showed us some preliminary sites for maybe a redevelopment bylaw, that kind of stuff. So any thoughts that you have on that? I think it's kind of important to kind of, you know, let's add some more things to that list. They only have three, and I think that we could come up with a lot more and, you know, move stuff around a little bit and make it, I don't know, I think that's what I'm looking for from you. I mean, any comment is fine, but especially that. Does anybody have any comments right now?
Like this redevelopment, you know, I always think-
You can hear Mike, so Karen can hear.
Yes, please.
I always think like Starbuck Shop. We could put another building on top of that. There's a lot of buildings like around here that we could put another building. And Starbuck Shop could be a workforce, apartments for not only Starbuck, you know, Mashpee Carmen, but Roach Brothers and stuff. Because they could get quite a bit of apartments on top of that. I mean, I mentioned that once to the Buff Chase, and he says, oh, I don't know about that. But, I mean, that's one place. I see a lot of apartments on top of that building. And it'd be easy to do that because you may have to put some steel columns in the building, but it'd be all steel on the second floor. And you could build, you know, just one floor, you probably get 40 apartments.
Well, you know what's interesting is Bell Tower Mall, you know where that is, on Route 28 in Centerville? All that commercial space on their upper floor is now housing. And there's some ordinance in Barnstable that's allowing for commercial space to be top-of-the-shop housing. And then, did you see the article in the Cape Cod Times about the Cape Cod Mall?
Yeah.
Yes.
And I'm like, I don't know if you caught, I don't know if they're going to put the housing in the parking lot or on top of the existing mall.
Right, and that's what I didn't understand.
I didn't understand that. But you've been in that parking lot. I mean, there's so much parking there, you know? So I think redevelopment is like going to bring on a lot of housing units. All right, so I guess if you have thoughts, comments, additions, please send them to Evan. I forget what they said was going to happen next. They're going to do public engagement, right?
Yeah, I think this is very, very, very preliminary kickoff meeting, so I think there's going to be like public comment period or some additional workshops. But I'll have to look into the details and provide them to you every other day because I can't remember specifically myself either.
Yeah, I think this point on, it's all public engagement. All right, and?
Excuse me, are they doing anything up for the base at all?
Say it again.
Are they doing anything up with the base?
In terms of?
Workforce housing, I think.
Not to my knowledge.
No, I've been asking-
It seems it would be a ton of places.
I've been asking Mike that give each town 100 acres. You know, it'd be Sandwich, Mashpee, Barn, and Fountain. And they can make a little city and have a bus there that could take the people to work. They're not using the base.
I know.
The property is already there. There's already a building. There's already parking.
The septic system is already there.
I mean, maybe septic might be an issue, but other than that-
No, they already have a wastewater treatment facility.
With not enough users. Yeah. They need customers.
And why not veteran housing?
You'd probably have to get three of the hour forces together.
I was told they couldn't put housing there because of the planes still coming in there. And I said, you got housing in there now when the National Guard used to go there. Those barracks are still there.
I mean, two of the reasons why it's difficult, it just seems like a perfect location and opportunity because they don't have to do any retrofitting to speak of. I mean, no trees have to be taken down, nothing else.
Oh, that's it.
I don't know. Sometimes logic doesn't seem to fit.
I know.
Okay, so let's see. I'm trying to look at the agenda to see what we can do next. I think under New Business, we can do the Willow Bend Tripartite Agreement. So it's in your packet. It's something that we looked at. And correct me if I'm wrong, Evan, it's something that Town Council has looked at.
Yeah, you, in your mid-December meeting, you voted to establish, A, one, to release the lots and establish the bond amount that Ed had reviewed and approved alongside Willow Bend. They've opted for a tripartite agreement, an agreement between the town, the planning board really, the applicant and their mortgage lender to secure the completion of construction of the subdivision. This agreement that is in your packet that has a draft watermark in it is the final copy that was reviewed and approved by council. I have a clean copy here for your signature. So I'm asking for you to execute this agreement tonight and further to execute fully the release of covenant to go alongside it at the registry.
And I confirmed, Evan confirmed for me with Town Council today that that agreement would remain in effect in the event of a foreclosure by the mortgagee.
All right.
Correct.
So I accept a motion to approve the tripartite agreement as presented and to sign the agreement.
Obey.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just bury us a sign over y'all.
You're all going to sign.
And does Rock sign in lieu of me, or do I?
Karen, since you're not here, I just need a majority of the board, so I've only included the members of the board who are present.
Okay.
Because I can't notarize your signature when you're not here.
Are you notarizing?
Yes.
Oh, good, thank you. And are we all signing this voluntarily for its stated purpose? Yes, everybody?
Yes.
Michael said yes. John?
I'm sorry.
Are we signing this voluntarily for its stated purpose? Because our name is going to get notarized, okay. Okay, and while you're doing that, I'm going to read and I'm going to open up the public hearing. Okay. Pursuant to Mash General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81T, the Mashpee and the Mashpee Rules and Regulations Governing the Subdivision of Land, the Mashpee Planning Board will hold the public hearing on Wednesday, November 2nd, 2022, at 7:10 PM, which has been continued to today at 7:10. And it says, in the events room at the Mashpee Public Library at 64 Steeple Street, Massachusetts. But of course, we're here at Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road, North Mashpee, Mass. Today, to consider an application made by Pleasant Wood Homes LLC for approval to a modification, of a modification to Spring Hill West Definitive Subdivision Plan of Land that would modify the lot lines of lots 40, 41, and 42, to give adequate frontage for three new building lots proposed for incorporation into the subdivision. The three proposed lots to be created and incorporated into a cluster subdivision are on a parcel of land totaling 6.024 acres and is addressed as 20 Tudor Terrace, Assessor's Map, 29 Block 198. The proposal will continue the cluster configuration of the existing subdivision and will add 2.49 acres of open space consistent with the requirements of the Mashpee zoning bylaw at the time of the cluster subdivision's approval in 1989. The plans may be reviewed in the office of the Town Clerk or the Town Planner at Mashpee Town Hall, submitted by Mary E. Wagan. Chair of Mashpee Planning Board. Publication dates, October 19th, 2022, and October 26th, 2022. Okay, I'm going to open up the other one, too. Seeing the appointed time has arrived, the chair opens up the public hearing for, at 7:10. The applicant is Pleasant Wood Homes LLC. The location is 20 Tudor Terrace, Map 29 Block 198. I just read into the record the public hearing notice. Seeing the appointed time has arrived, 7:15, the chair opens up the public hearing for Pleasant Woods Home LLC. Location is 20 Tudor Terrace, Map 29 Block 198. I'll read the public hearing notice. In pursuant to Mash General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, the Mashpee Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, November 2nd, 2022, at 7:15 PM. That's been continued to today at this time in the events room at Mashpee Public Library at 64 Steeple Street, Mashpee, Mass. That's been, we're meeting here at Mashpee Town Hall tonight to consider an application made by Pleasant Woods Home LLC to modify a special permit approved October 6th, 1989, that approved the creation of a 45 single-family building lots in cluster configuration on 23.738 acres of land and preserved 17.15 acres of open space. The applicant seeks to modify the special permit decision to incorporate the additional three building lots proposed and further to recognize the modified layouts of lots 40, 41, and 42 as shown on the Spring Hill West Definitive Subdivision Plan, submitted by Mary E. Wagan. Chair. Publication dates, October 19th, 2022, and October 26th, 2022. Okay, so in your packet, we have a letter from Christopher Corain of Dunning Corain Nichols &amp; Gardner LLP, Attorneys at Law, dated January 17th, 2023. It's addressed to me as Chair and the Planning Board. Following up on my email of Friday, January 13th, 2023, to Town Planner, it is hereby requested that the hearing scheduled for Wednesday, Wednesday, January 18th, 2022, be extended to the next available date of February 1st, 2023. As indicated in my email, Town Council sent a request for information to my attention last week regarding the application. I was out of the office and could not respond. In order to properly and timely respond to Town Council and to allow him to provide his opinion, I am requesting the continuance. Should you have any questions in this regard, please don't hesitate to contact me. Yours truly, very truly yours, Christopher Corain. So do I have a motion to continue the public hearings to Wednesday, February 1st, at 7:10 and 7:15 respectively?
Obey.
Karen, did you second that?
Yes, I did.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So if there's anybody in the audience that's here for the Tudor Terrace item, the applicant has asked for a continuance, so we're not taking any public comment today. If you want to submit public comment, you can do that through the Town Planner. And I apologize if you traveled. Okay, because I know some people were traveling. But February 1st. And all the plans and everything are in the Town Planner's office. I think there's a packet right there, isn't there?
There is.
If you want to take the meeting packet with you, that has everything. It's the thick packet right in the middle. Oh, yeah, it's the big one. That has-
Oh, this whole thing?
Yeah. But that has a big section. It has the minutes from the 21st, and it has, I asked the Town Planner to put in the updated materials.
Okay.
Okay?
That's great, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
If you have any reason to call, anytime, I'm happy.
I will do, thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Okay, back to New Business. Zoning amendments proposed for the May 2023 town meeting. This correspondence from the Town Manager's Office setting a deadline of Monday, February 13th, 2023, for the submittal of any warrant articles to the Board of Selectmen for May town meeting. So, let's see, Evan, do you want to go first?
Where would you like me to start?
Oh, in the packet, it goes right to your fill restriction proposal.
Sure.
Is that, is that okay if we go to that? We'll just-
I was anticipating discussing that under our Clean Water Initiative bullets.
Oh, do you want to wait then? I'll wait, okay.
It's up to you.
So, all right, so to follow the agenda. All right, so Evan brought to us some new material regarding solar energy, zoning for solar energy systems in the town.
Mary?
Mm-hmm.
Before we just get too deep into solar, I did, for the Clean Water articles in particular, I wanted to provide you an update on everything the Community Development Department has been discussing relative to some of these initiatives. So I asked Drew to join me today. Is it possible we can address the fill and some of the other things first before we get into solar stuff?
So, sorry, Chrissy, we're jumping again. You had this under what?
Clean Water Initiative.
Okay, so we're going to go under Old Business, Clean Water Initiative, Update on Community Engagement and Education Strategies regarding the flood-
Excuse me, Madam Chair. Is there any way that Evan can speak more into the microphone? I'm really having a hard time hearing.
Yep.
I apologize.
Yep. So, yep, so-
I'll be as loud as possible.
So, so we're going to, the items are the floodplain development zoning, tree protection bylaw, and fertilizer restriction and other wetland protection regulations. So put the mic right up.
Karen, I'm going to be very, very loud. It's probably going to be too loud for folks at home. So for the folks at home, turn those volume knobs down. Thank you. Since last town meeting in October, there were a number of articles in the last go-around that were brought forth for consideration by the Select Board. A lot of these propositions didn't ultimately make it on the warrant. But they included proposals to provide restrictions on development in the floodplains, specifically bringing in material to raise the elevation of your lot to the first-floor elevation of your house would be out of the flood zone. Additionally, we, the Department of Natural Resources submitted articles that proposed increasing the wetlands buffer, jurisdictional buffer, to 150 feet. There was some contemplation of fertilizer restrictions, et cetera. Last town meeting, it was the experience of staff that there was a fair amount of misinformation that was spun, that was born out of these proposals and spun, and ultimately, these articles were impacted by that. And ultimately, many folks gave us the feedback that they felt they had inadequate time to consume the articles, that staff and boards and commissions didn't have a solid knowledge of the potential impacts of these articles. The Select Board was concerned about that. Some members of the community were concerned about that. And I think us as staff were listening loud and clear. And ultimately, after October town meeting, immediately convened the Community Development Department heads. And we meet weekly to kind of discuss strategy and discuss some of these regulatory priorities that have been identified by this board and others for subsequent action, either at the town meeting level or via promulgation of rules and regulations and independent bodies, like the Conservation Commission and like the Board of Health. So on, two weeks after the last town meeting, we convened and began strategizing and contemplating some of the feedback that was received and really tried to understand, you know, amid a lot of the misinformation, what in that feedback was constructive and really, we needed to be considerate of? What was lacking in terms of education and engagement and how we can fill in those gaps and process? So that when we bring forth these regulatory articles that we consider important changes the town should be making to address its water quality and other issues, we want to position them well for success down the road. So we discussed an approach. We began identifying, conducting analyses to understand what the potential detriments or impacts to property owners may be who might be negatively impacted by these articles. And then assigned deliverables essentially to begin reworking these to come back in some sort of form that we can present to boards and commissions. The fill proposal you have in your bylaw is a modification of what you saw last summer. And it's very simple language changes, but things that we felt were important. And a few substantive technical changes. But ultimately, I'm bringing this back to you for your consideration. Staff have been contemplating a relatively robust education and engagement strategy to really try and garner some support for these articles and potential regulatory changes. And further, to make sure that everyone is aware of how, of the order of operations and potential impacts and so that they approach town meeting or any other body able to make an informed decision one way or the other. So we've been mobilizing for that particular effort. And so as we approach this upcoming town meeting and approach a deadline, I've been getting some feedback that there are folks who don't want to wait for October. And so in my cover memo to you today, this, the fill proposition is presented to you in the form of a zoning bylaw, which would obviously need to be submitted by this body, placed on the warrant by the Select Board, and achieve a 2/3 majority vote at a subsequent town meeting. And so that's the bar. And we think to achieve success at that threshold, the education engagement is a really important component of success. And even if it's not, the zoning bylaw is not the vehicle with which these regulations are brought forth, we still feel it's quite prudent and important to establish that expectation for community education engagement as we contemplate these new regulatory changes. And so, kind of based on some of the feedback my office has been getting relative to process and time and, you know, which regulatory framework are these regulations going to live in, I contemplated with Drew and the health agent relative to additional strategies, other approaches we could potentially take. So I presented this fill proposition to you in terms of a zoning bylaw. So you can understand the purpose and intent of what we're suggesting in terms of restrictions in the floodplain. But they don't necessarily have to live in the zoning bylaw, which is why I wanted to invite Drew here to discuss a potential alternative to approaching this at a town meeting vote via a zoning bylaw. And allows us to move more expeditiously than waiting for October, but allows us to continue with the engagement and education that we feel is critical. So I'll probably just hand this over to Drew in a second to talk a little bit about what we've been discussing. But we feel after education engagement, getting people familiar with the impacts, taking some feedback from local engineering firms, contractors, boards, committees, commissions, volunteers on the substance of the articles over a three or four month period, and not submitting these again for a town meeting consideration, at least the fill proposition. But alternatively, to present these as regulatory modifications promulgated independently by the Conservation Commission and the Board of Health, who can do this, I'm going to ask Drew to talk physically about their process, but ultimately can do this in a public meeting without the necessity for a town meeting vote. I don't want to suggest this pathway without it being married to the appropriate community engagement that we've defined. We really feel like this is very important, no matter what the mechanism for bringing these changes forth is. We'd like the opportunity to go through a relatively intensive review process on these and establish a year-over-year expectation to do this as we contemplate regulatory changes. So unless there are questions on the article itself, I'd like to hand it off to Drew, if it's okay with the chair, to kind of dig a little bit deeper into what I might be suggesting here.
Great. Welcome, Drew.
Thank you. So for the record, Drew McMahon is a town of Mashpee Conservation Agent. So what we were discussing with Evan, so I'll first say that under the Chapter 172 Mashpee Wetland Bylaw, there are subsequent enabling regulations that deal with all manner of wetland resource areas, coastal inland, and land subject to coastal storm flow, the 100-year floodplain. So we have a regulation, it's Regulation 25, and that's what it's entitled, Land Subject to Coastal Storm Flow, which basically means the 100-year floodplain, which includes the velocity zone, the A-zone, the AE-zone, but not any other types of floodzones. So it doesn't include the X-zone. And there's no buffer zone attached to floodzone under the regs. It's just floodzone only. All other wetlands have a 100-foot buffer zone associated with them. Floodzone does not in its current iteration. So, so under the town's Home Rule Authority, the commission is empowered to make amendments and changes and edit their regulations as long as it falls under the scope of the bylaw. So one of the things we were talking about is when it comes to the issue of fill in the floodzone, that this is an avenue that the commission could take because they have full jurisdictional authority over all areas of the 100-year floodplain. So they could take this up through the public meeting process. And basically, the order of events would be that we have a non, it's an Advisory Bylaw Review Subcommittee that's made up of less than a quorum of current commissioners. And the purpose of the Subcommittee is to discuss each regulation and see if it needs to be updated. So we're going reg by reg in what we consider to be the priorities, and looking to see where we can amend them and update them, or if there's any outdated language, irrelevant language, all those sorts of things. Just go through and see what needs to be done to update them. So the first part of the process would be to bring this regulation before the Subcommittee, have them talk it over, see what sort of language, certainly involve town council ultimately in the process. But it would start with the Subcommittee. Then once we have kind of a conceptual draft, if you will, it would go to the commission at a public meeting and obviously be posted on the agenda for the commission to take into consideration the Subcommittee's recommendations. The next meeting likely, if not the meeting following that, would be an advertisement in the newspaper for public comment on these proposed regulatory changes. The regulations in their draft form would be posted on our website. Hard copies would be made available. In other words, 100% transparency and outreach to the public so that we would try to make as many people as aware as possible in preparing for the public meeting and public comment. And then based on the outcome of the public comment, there may be another meeting of the Subcommittee to take into consideration public comment and make further amendments. And then the last part of the process would be, again, advertising in the paper for the promulgation of the final draft version of the regulation. So that's the order of events. Subcommittee, Conservation Commission, public comment, promulgation. And that's what we've done previously for all the regulatory updates that we've done, most recently to two of our regulations dealing with docks, piers, and floats, and mitigation. Those are two regulations in our Chapter 172 bylaw that we've recently updated and promulgated. And we're currently working on two others, our filing fees, which we haven't updated in 12 years, and a regulation that deals with prevention of pollution, which deals with nitrogen loading and nutrient loading into water bodies and putting a restriction on that based on proposed development. So that's basically the process, and it's just another avenue at our disposal to make changes to the land subject to coastal storm flow and prohibiting fill in the floodzone. So be happy to answer any questions on that.
Right, when we tried to pass this, they were confused because, first of all, they didn't like to draw. And then they didn't understand, like in a floodzone, you have to be 14 feet. They didn't understand that. But people down in Shore Drive, they don't want the ponds. They want the foundation with a level, yeah, that's why they're putting the fill in there.
Right.
And another thing, I don't know, we're giving out new permits right now. There's two in my neighborhood. They're still giving Title V systems. I don't understand that. They know it's going to be changing. How come they, when they give a new permit, they don't say, you got to get an alternative system?
Right.
And then if we do that, even if you get the sewers, you get those people, I don't know how long those systems last, but they don't have to tie in to that system is no good no more. I don't, one of the houses in my neighborhood is right on the boat landing. It's four houses down from the river there. And it's a Title V, and it's going to have five bedrooms.
Right.
And so that's going to pool right into the river in a couple of years because
Right.
that flow is already in that ground.
So-
You know, is there any, how do we do that?
So what the commission has been doing, and I'll just preface this by saying that Regulation 30, which is the regulation we're currently working on on prevention of pollution, will put a parts-per-million range requirement for all manner of input of nutrient loading. So septic system leaching, stormwater runoff, fertilizer, everything that contributes to nutrient loading on a given lot is going to have to meet a parts-per-million range. And this is based on consultation with the health agent and other folks, you know, that have relevant feedback. So that's going to pretty much require any sort of septic system upgrade to go to an IA system. The only issue that we're still kind of discussing is the scenarios that lead to a septic upgrade. If it's a failure and the property owner is not expanding, there's no increase in flow, is that a reasonable thing to require an IA system in that circumstance? If it's new development and they're pitching a Title V system standard, that's a perfect case to require an IA system. So we have to work out what sort of scenarios are justified and which ones would be burdensome in terms of requiring an IA system.
All right, let me ask you a question. You talk about, you know, 1,000 parts per million. We used to try to get titles, I mean, like development, five parts per million. They get the 10, and they say, oh, the state says 10. And it's like, why do we even waste our time? Put the five. Is that, is that going to be the same way?
Well, it started out as five was the threshold.
But is the state going along with this?
I don't know the answer to that at this point.
So then it's mute. Because they turn around, sue, and they're going to win. Just like they've been doing, you know, like, you were Roach Brothers, and for a while they worked at it, but they said,
Right.
we're meeting the 10 parts. We said, the special permit, five parts.
Well, with the range, which is still, you know, would reduce impacts based on the feedback from the Board of Health Agent, we haven't, I can't remember off the top of my head because he just supplied this information this week about what his recommended range of parts-per-million should be incorporated into this regulation. It's definitely lower than what we're typically seeing with, you know, all of the inputs, not just septic, but everything that contributes to nutrient loading on a lot. So that's, we did realize that the original five parts-per-million, and I've talked to many people to get their input on this, is simply unachievable. It's not feasible to get that low in the absence of searing. So it's just not something that, you don't want to put in something that's utterly unenforceable. What's the point? So that's why we're going with a range that's still going to reduce nutrient loading and empower the commission to not just suggest, hey, we recommend an IA system, but you are required to put in an IA system. Right. So that is the thought process moving forward when crafting this regulation.
That was like a good start.
Go ahead, Michael.
I guess I got a little bit of a question on process.
Sure.
I mean, you know, we live in an interesting world these days. And I believe that what we need to do as people in the positions we're in is make sure that everybody in every town, regardless of how they feel, have an opportunity to speak their piece. I don't think, I think this is very important. I support the idea. But I don't think it's a committee decision at a public meeting published in the enterprise that's read by 10% of the people in town. I don't think, I think you get criticized for doing things that way because I think it sounds like you're trying to push it through without getting everybody involved. It's going to take longer to do it the other way. But quite frankly, I don't think it's right to do it any way other than the right way, which is to make sure, and I would go in a public meeting where people show up and can vote and can speak out loud. I mean, you know, a meeting at night that's published in the enterprise, you're not going to get anybody that's, unless they happen to read it by mistake, you know, unfortunately. I mean, that's just a belief that I have that we need to do it wide open. And if it takes a little longer to get the results that we want, which is what I believe is the right thing to do, I believe that's the way to do it. I don't want to be criticized. I don't mind being criticized for anything. But I don't want to be criticized for not opening it up to everybody.
Sure.
It's just a belief that I have.
Yeah, I completely understand that.
May I?
I was going to see if John and Rob wanted to say something before we went back to, and then me.
I'm good.
You're good, John?
I had this, I'm having the same reaction, Mike had. You know, the reason to go the committee route is to make it happen faster. We're talking about early summer versus October. I guess a couple of questions. What's our confidence that early summer is really going to be early summer based on the way things move?
Yeah.
Anyway, I'll leave it at that. It feels a little bit like an end around.
John, I really want to hear you. Could you speak closer to the microphone?
Yeah, for my question is, how confident are we that this will happen in early summer versus October? Because if we have low or moderate confidence, I would suggest we take it to the voters, like we did the first time. You know, you can have public hearings at the committee level or the commission level. And not that this would happen, but we have public comment here all the time, and we may vote completely against what the public comment is. And there's nothing the public can do about it. It feels like these are important enough where we should give the town the opportunity to vote on these articles.
I'm going to let Karen speak. Go ahead, Karen. Do you have any comments at this time?
I see both sides of this. I guess the whole thing is, and I understand, Mike, your concerns, you want to have people showing up. And the question is, how do we do this? I mean, I agree, putting a public notice in the enterprise is not going to do it. I mean, maybe we have a big old thing on page three in the center on the enterprise, but we need more than that. We need, I think, we need a big media campaign. I'll let Evan speak on that because you're probably more familiar with these kinds of things. But we, you know, it's so distressing to me that we only got 625 on the LCP survey, and we only get 300 at town meeting. I mean, we just have to do whatever we can to wake up people and show them, folks, we need you. You need to listen. This is really important. This is your life. It's the quality of your life is happening right here and now. Please come forward. So whatever we can do to make that happen, we need to do that. And Evan, I defer to you.
So, yep, and before we get to that, I am going to kind of join in to the line. So I think that people need to be invited and they need to participate, right? This method to get these regulations online is very clever. I really applaud that you've figured this out. Because without the zoning, with the zoning, some lots are already grandfathered. So the most powerful way to get this done, and the quickest way to get this done, is through the CONCOM regs. So I really applaud you guys for, and Ashley and your group, for really thinking about this carefully. Because this is actually the right way to do it. A zoning bylaw, lots are grandfathered. It doesn't matter. So new lots, yeah, it will matter. But for existing lots, it's grandfathered. It's not powerful. As powerful as this. And we're in a toxic stew. We're in a water crisis. And we, the town really does need to move on these quickly. I was just going to ask, for your Subcommittee meetings, are those public?
They're not advertised because they are advisory capacity. And I checked with the town clerk to see if we did indeed need to advertise them. We don't. We'd be happy to have the public come in. We'd be happy to advertise them. I was just looking at, you know, what is required and what isn't when it comes to the Subcommittee. As long as we have less than a quorum of commissioners as part of the Subcommittee, it's not considered to be a public meeting. It's just an advisory.
You know me, Drew, I'd love to go.
Yeah, sure.
So I'd love to go. I think they should be somehow or another public meetings, not public comment. You know, I understand the committee needs to-
Because really, yeah.
Get their work done because it's really the commission that will take the public comment. And they're set up for that. They're set up for that. But I think that any, you know, Subcommittee meeting should be held in a public space which is accessible for the public to hear. And I think that the more you go to these, the more you understand what's going on. Do you, so, so the things that you're working on right now, your filing fees, the prevention of nutrient loading, and also on that list is no fill in the floodplain.
Yeah, we haven't opened that up yet to any sort of, it's just on the, you know, it's on the radar.
Right. It's kind of like in this made, this overall strategic approach.
Right.
And these would be the CONCOM process, right?
Correct.
The 150-foot setback to wetlands? No.
That has to go before town meeting because when you're making a change to a bylaw, and that language currently, the establishment of a 100-foot buffer zone is bylaw language, not regulatory language.
But not zoning. It's-
It's in our Chapter 172 Wetland Bylaw.
Okay.
Right, first section, 172-1, I believe. Actually, it's 172-2 where it specifically mentions the 100-foot buffer zone.
Okay, so that's a town meeting vote?
Yeah.
And how about this fertilizer regulations that we've been hearing for? Is that a CONCOM reg or a bylaw?
I think it was, it was CONCOM.
It's really, it's the bylaw we've dove into the least at this point. The DPW director had some relatively significant concerns as to how it was brought forth last town meeting, and she hasn't provided us comment yet. She's working on that. So we aren't going to address the fertilizer bylaw until we take the DPW director's comments into consideration.
Mary, I couldn't hear that. Is it a town meeting or is it-
It's a CONCOM and bylaw. And, right, there is a bylaw right now. But the DPW director, and I've been at meetings where she's spoken about this, has really good insight, Karen, about how that is kind of like effective. So, okay.
Yeah, the CONCOM too, just to add into that, has concerns. I raise concerns as the agent when it comes to a complete ban on fertilizer in that the commission, in probably 90% of the permits, the orders of conditions that are issued require some form of mitigation or compensatory planting. And you need start-up fertilizer for that in order for it to really be meaningful and establish the plantings. As per, it is a consistent requirement for most of the applications that we, you know, permits that we issue. So it's not a copious amount of fertilizer. It's just start-up. And it has, there are, you know, special conditions that go along that that has to be an organic variety, water insoluble, and all these things that ensure that the fertilizer is going to have the least amount of impact to the water quality as possible, but at the same time ensure that the mitigation is going to not only get established but prosper. Because that's really a basis of kind of exchange. We'll let you do this expansion. We'll let you make this change of footprint. But you're going to take this area of lawn away and you're going to make it mitigation with native plantings. And if you're handcuffed by no fertilizer at all, that flies right in the face of that, you know, trying to accomplish that mitigation, so.
Okay. And we, there was a presentation, I don't know if anybody caught it, before the Select Board regarding the horsepower regulations being proposed for San Tuit Pond. Now, is that a town meeting vote or a regulation?
That's town meeting. Yep, yep, yes.
All right. So at Karen's recommendation, I'm going to hand it back to Evan because you had some stuff to say.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify one really important point, particularly based on your comments. I would say the Subcommittee process that Drew outlined would be supplementary to the engagement and education process I'm going to describe to you. I left out a very critical component here. And so I'm going to describe to you what I've been contemplating as an approach. End of February, because this comes after a fair amount of analysis to determine, A, what properties would be potentially impacted by these things. But first, we got a lot of feedback from the consultants who Mashpee property owners hire to do their work. Some of it not so great, some of it substantive and thoughtful. So we wanted to make sure we were considerate of the things that they were offering us that we needed to be considerate of if we're going to make this successful in a round two. So end of February, a lot of them indicated to me directly that they would like to be involved in this engagement process. They think they have something of value to offer because they're the ones seeking the permits on a day-to-day basis. So first, I want to invite them in to a listening session workshop to get the feedback on, based on the draft. Engage with them, hear their, listen to their feedback. I think the- I think the substantive feedback that's consistent with our policy goals here, we would consider and amend the draft appropriately for, in March, going back to the property owners we've identified, who would be directly impacted by such a proposal, to invite them in, and rework draft, to hear what the potential impact to their property owner may or may not be, and to get the information from us firsthand. From there, take any comments that are substantive, tweak the draft, bring it forth into more of an open session, where we invite maybe a higher, you know, higher level, the Popanosa Beach Association, the Peninsula Council, and their, the homeowners associations under their umbrella. Dennis, the folks down in your neighborhood. Invite them, then open it into more of a general public process, where we go through the ins and outs of the proposed restrictions, what the potential impact may be, and how the process and enforcement will work. Ultimately, to refine this down by the beginning of the summer, May-June, into a final proposal. I had initially conceived of this engagement process for an early submission to the select board for an October town meeting warrant. So, I said, we kind of discussed this particular mechanism to not have to wait, because it actually would be for January for any zoning bylaw to be active. But we, I don't want to pursue this pathway without what I'm suggesting right now. So the subcommittee process would be supplementary, in essence, to an independent engagement process, if you will.
Say that again.
The subcommittee process that Drew works for would essentially be supplementary to an independent engagement strategy, working in tandem, essentially. So that the subcommittee can be a part and parcel to the engagement process itself, can work with the planning department, the planning board on drafts, and the conservation commission. And ultimately, the goal is to get to an end of a process, whereas there's no one in town who can reasonably say they didn't have ample opportunity to consume the information, to get the real information, and to formulate an opinion on themselves. So that when we do advertise a public meeting to promulgate these regulations, they're informed to go and speak their mind on the proposal.
That all sounds great.
That's good. I would agree with that. I mean, you get to that point, and you're getting nothing but positive feedback, then I would be 100% behind. I just worry about, you know, it's always gonna be someone's gonna say, "I didn't know."
Right.
Even though you told them five times.
Yeah.
I think that's true, but that's why I want to, you know, reason, I don't want people to, as long as we do our jobs, they shouldn't be able to reasonably state that.
It's, we would do the public engagement even if it was going to town meeting, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so, we're gonna give everybody the opportunity to listen, learn, give their opinion, but we're not gonna allow them to vote.
Town meeting, though, right?
No, if it goes to committee, it's not gonna go to town meeting.
Well, town meeting cannot change the Concom regs. Do you know what I mean? Town meeting doesn't have that jurisdiction. So there's some things that, you know, like all the different things that impact, for example, this, this filling in the floodplain, right? That's, in our towns, like, bylaws and rules and regs, different parts of those are controlled by different entities. So the Concom has to vote for some of these things to go through, just like town meeting has to vote.
So I guess my position would be, if the residents have the ability to vote on it at town meeting, that's where it should be decided.
So that would be bylaws. Our town code, our bylaw, yeah. Otherwise, you can't change the bylaw without a town meeting vote.
But I would discourage taking the vote away from the residents.
You're not, because you can't
I'm just, I'm just
Yeah, it would be illegal. It would be illegal. So, it's not gonna happen. It's not gonna happen. Now, when you talked about the consultant, are they gonna do a presentation about their, is that one of the first things you're starting with? Is it them doing a presentation about their report?
When I mention consultants, I mean local consultants who are working for property owners, who are making, who are filing their applications with, like, the conservation commission.
Oh, I see, sorry.
We got a fair amount of flack, negative feedback, from those people who wanted to be involved. And I think there's a reasonable case and basis for taking their feedback.
So we're even reaching out to neighborhood associations, Realtor groups, landscaping groups, you know, any opportunity to engage the public and educate for outreach. That's really what we're focusing on first and foremost. As Evan mentioned earlier, in, you know, full disclosure, and any opportunity to get the word out and do our due diligence, that's really, in my opinion, at the forefront of this whole thing, is making sure that the public is as informed as possible, so that you can't come back and say, "I didn't know about this," which you typically hear at town meeting twice a year, every year. There's always somebody who comes up to the microphone and says, "I wasn't aware of this. This wasn't posted. I didn't hear anything about this. It's the first time I'm hearing about it."
The difference, oh, Andrew, is the fact that they had a chance to vote at town meeting.
Excuse me.
Take it away from them.
The bylaws, they're all two-thirds vote. All those that are bylaws are two-thirds vote.
Zoning bylaws are.
Only zoning?
Yes.
So, on the fertilizer, that's gonna go to town meeting? That's a 50, 51% vote?
It's my understanding, yes. And that's probably gonna be the last thing addressed, because it's just, we have some stuff already in the bylaws, and it's just complicated. Zoning. But a bylaw change, like the wetlands bylaw, that's a simple majority.
Yeah.
Just to that list of people to be engaged, I have a feeling that if you only focus on people who have already said no, you're gonna hear a lot of no's. There's a lot of people that want this to happen and want this to happen like yesterday.
Sure.
You know, so, I just get a little worried that if you, I like what you're doing, but you need to involve the pond and water organizations at some point.
Yeah, sure.
Because they'll be knocking on your door anyways, right? They'll be saying, "When are you gonna start those meetings, and when can they come?" And, you know, I like this, what you're doing. I just, you might hear no, 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 until you get to the, in this scenario, you might hear no, 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 until you get to the general public process, and then you'll have a big yes. Because even though I don't own waterfront property, and I don't develop or consult on waterfront property, I do swim in water that gets impacted by those. And I think that I have, you know, should have a say on that before everybody else gets to say no. Do you know what I mean? That's the, but I like it. I like it. I do think that we should have Fasen O'Neill come down and do a presentation of their report. Maybe I'll talk to Rodney about that. But people were so fascinated about what they had to say. They were very fascinated about the horsepower regulations, right? And they were very engaged. There was 50 people in this room. But there were a lot of people that were saying, "What else can we do? What else is in that report?" And I think it's a pretty good report, and they're a pretty smart crew. Even that, remember that pond meeting we had? I mean, it was on, it was on Good Friday. It was on a religious holiday, and there were like 100 people in the library meeting room. It was incredible, so.
It's amazing, though, to try and get all the people to get interested in this. But I talked to a lot of people who don't even know if there's water problems in Mashpee.
Wow.
You go to, you know, town meetings, and we have 200 lots
Yeah.
Town meeting. The most people we're ever gonna get is 400 people, you know, to do this survey, so.
Unless we put marijuana, pit bulls, or motorcycle on the, now we've got 600.
That's all the people that show up. Let's just do these, like, then.
Hey, can I have one comment?
I was gonna say, the other question you might have is, how many of the properties that are gonna be impacted can even vote?
I don't know that question.
But I mean, it's important to do both sides of it.
I think, my initial approach
Well, everybody wants clean water, okay? So we're all on the same side.
I don't think we're talking about not cleaning the water. We're talking about letting people say what they want to say.
Right.
So, for this particular proposal, I'm really asking the board to consider two different options. And it's kind of like, you know, chicken or the egg scenario. I initially conceived of doing this as a zoning bylaw for the purposes you kind of identified. Understanding that there are grandfathering provisions in 48 section six, and that would impact the long-term viability of these bylaws. Which is why thereafter, if these were approved at town meeting, we would ask the conservation commission and board of health to bring their regulations into consistency with what town meeting had just approved. So then all three documents are communicating with each other. If we were to go zoning bylaw, then that would happen second. If we were to go regulatory pathway first, I would then want to ask town meeting to make some amendment to recognize those regulatory changes. So it's either zoning bylaw first, two-thirds vote at town meeting, and come in to promulgate regulations thereafter, or we go the route we've just described, and we go back to town meeting as a housekeeping article after.
I like that way. Where the zoning is the housekeeping.
I'm asking your, you know, asking for your
Call him for it.
Vote one way or the other.
I think Concom should go first. Sorry, Drew. What do you think, Karen?
I do, too. I really do. We need these bylaws or these regs so desperately. We really do. I guess, you know, as you say, Mike, what issues there might be. It might be about the buffer. I don't know. How many people are gonna be impacted by that? The fill, as the rewrite, is really good. I don't know if you've read it, but it really is good. It's crystal clear. There's no ambiguity about it, and, you know, it tells everybody, you're not losing any ability to build there. You just have to do it two ways. And I think it's excellent. The horsepower one, you know, I felt a little bit, as some of the people got up and spoke, you know, is how big an impact is that really? Because I'm thinking, as I'm sitting there, the fertilizer, that could really be a big one. We could just stop that. I mean, who's gonna be objecting to that? The landscapers, I guess. That's gonna, that's gonna probably have an effect on them. But, you know, we have to take some draconian methods here to save this town, I think. Do you not think so, Mike?
No, I don't disagree with you. I mean, one of the things you talk about fertilizer, we have an enforcement issue. In reality, you could talk about it till you're blue in the face, but it's gotta be enforced, yeah.
Yeah, well, okay, so let's say you can't buy potassium in the feed and grains, or whatever. You can't buy that kind of fertilizer. People who are gonna violate are gonna go to other towns where they can buy it, I'm sure. That's gonna happen.
I agree with 100% what you say, but crystal clear has many definitions. What's crystal clear to somebody may not be crystal clear to somebody else. I am a proponent, 100% of doing exactly what you said, but I don't think we should take it away from the voters. That's just my personal thing.
We can't, we can't.
I agree.
The fertilizer, the bylaw, I cannot.
I have a clarifying question, just in your, and maybe it's just the way I'm reading your memo, Evan, but the second to last paragraph, last sentence, it says, "We may consider making these regulatory changes through Concom regulations and board of health regulations that can be promulgated without a town meeting vote." And then you go on to explain why. It just feels like, because it didn't go well at the last town meeting, we're gonna take it somewhere else so it goes the way that we believe it should, without taking it back to the town. That's the way it feels. Maybe for all the right reasons, but it feels, you know, the public engagement's critical, regardless of which way we go. And for public engagement, we'll get the same cast of characters we always get. I'm sorry, I've become very cynical about public engagement.
That's so rude.
Well, we will get the same, I'm sorry, the same
I'm sorry, even when somebody comes here and they're insulting me, we do not call them a cast of characters.
We will get the same group of people, because we started a public engagement process in April for the LCP. We got 15,000 people in town. We got 600 people to take the survey. It's, we will try really hard, and we'll still have very similar faces showing up.
I do think we'll see different, you know, when you're contemplating potential restrictions, I think you'll ignite a fair amount of participation.
Then let them vote.
I think, you know, my memo really came as, comes as a result of feedback I was getting as town meeting was approaching. So I wanted to be able to provide you options, because my position is this. We have to go through the education engagement process. We have to get ahead, we have to, A, understand impacts of proposals, be able to replicate results when we do the analyses, and be able to thoughtfully describe those impacts in layman's terms to the public. I know we can do that. I know we have the information and data to do that effectively. And I know we're in a position to do that in a manner where we get the appropriate amount of participation. The vehicle, I keep using the term vehicle, but whether they're, these, the intention to, this particular pathway, I kind of contemplated in my memo, is certainly not to skirt any particular town meeting, or to skirt the obligation or commitment of the town, or to make a decision at town meeting. But there are just, a lot, there are many who are giving me feedback that they were uncomfortable with waiting until October. So I wanted to provide at least the option.
I read it the way you wrote it. I read it positive, and two options, good options. They're both very good options. I would love to go faster than slower. I would say 100% behind everything you say, going with the first model. I'd have just a very hard time not allowing, not having that, everybody have a chance to speak up and vote, that's all.
And I make the proposal because I don't feel, and this is Evan, town planner, speaking. I don't feel prepared to recommend a submission of a zoning bylaw article for October, or for May. Because we will not have the time to do the engagement thoughtfully.
So, it seems like the majority of the board is in support of your proposal.
And so, I just wanted to provide that second option, so that we don't have to end up waiting until January, kind of a middle ground.
Yeah, I
If we think we can move as quickly as you suggest.
Yeah. And so I should know, in a perfect world, that's the
So, what can we do for you, Drew, to support you and keep this going forward?
Well, I don't know if there's anything you can really do to, I mean, you've got the options in front of you. I, you know, I agree that the more opportunity there is to incorporate public comment. You know, to your, to your point about that the groups that are in favor of this also need to be contacted and engaged, you know, I couldn't agree more. I didn't mean to make it sound like we're only going after the naysayers.
It was this point where they were like, "If we only hear no, we won't go forward." Well, if you ask the wrong people, or not the right people.
You know, garner as much support as possible, because we feel it's the right thing to do. But as far as, you know, which avenue to choose, I mean, eventually, I would say that the conservation commission, we're going through every single regulation that we have. And we're looking at it to see where it needs to be updated. And land subject to coastal storm flow is one of our regulations that is gonna go through that process, regardless of whether it goes to town meeting in some fashion or not. So, and the commission, from my take and pulse of the commission, is that they put a very high priority on transparency and public engagement. So if it were to go through the home rule authority route, it may not be an expedited process at all. It may be drawn out with extended public comment, and extended outreach, and other mechanisms to be part of that process, to make sure that public engagement is, you know, taken advantage of as much as possible. I just gave you the kind of
Yes.
steps. I didn't say that's how it's gonna go, but it's, you know, that is something that
That's the minimum.
I think we want to be very thoughtful, deliberate, and open. You know, particularly with that kind of a change that has those potential impacts to development, and everything else that goes along with it, eliminating fill in the flood zone, that's not something like, you know, changing a mitigation to, you know, an aspect of a mitigation regulation or anything. It's a larger scope impact to that regulation. So by proxy, you'd really want to expand public outreach and education, and not just go by the order of events that we've done for less impactful changes to regulations. So I could just put that out there for your consideration. That it wouldn't be expedited, try to eliminate, you know, reduce public engagement or anything like that. That would never be the case. And it never has been with previous regulatory That would never be the case, and it never has been with, with previous regulatory changes. Always been very careful and deliberate, but.
So how do we read, how do we see your regulations? Are they on the town website? Okay, so you go to the conservation department?
Conservation page, and you'll see sidebar with a bunch of links, and one of them is bylaws and regulations, chapter one seventy-two, and you can read through.
That's the bylaw, and then the, all right, the regs are, okay.
Bylaws one seventy-two dash one through one seventy-two dash fourteen, and then regulations are one through thirty-three, I believe, yeah.
So given what you said, Drew, about the process, early summer feels like a stretch. And the other thing that, that comes to mind is some of these impacted residents aren't here until May. So your, you know, your timeline gets squeezed. It is an early summer, it's late summer, it's early fall, now it's, you know, you're on top of town meeting.
Yeah.
Feels like a more transparent way to do it, in my opinion.
All right, so I think we're ready to move on. Thank you. Did you need anything else from us?
Um, are you comfortable? I, I guess I, I'm, there's a zoning bylaw deadline of, of February thirteenth, so if you want to pursue the zoning bylaw route, I'd like a vote to that. If you prefer to not pursue a zoning bylaw route and go the route that Drew and I have described, a, a vote to support one way or the other would be appreciated.
Well, I prefer going Drew's way.
So I accept a motion to accept the Town Planner's recommended process for approval of these contemplated changes to our conservation bylaws, wetlands bylaws, Conservation Commission regulations, and zoning bylaws.
Wait a second.
So be it.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
I thought the zoning bylaw had to go to town meeting.
It, it would.
I was just saying that, that they're, they're, the, the process that they've, that they've presented here today, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I'm opposed.
I guess the question is, does the board want me to submit on your behalf of a, a fill proposition for a zoning bylaw consideration for May? Or, or would you prefer?
Well, we just made a motion that it would not be.
All right, the motion just felt a little unclear, so I, I underst, I understand the tone and tone of the board, so.
Chrissy, do you, do you got it? Okay. Is there any discussion?
Are we gonna vote?
Yeah, I'm, I'm asking for discussion on the motion. Okay, seeing no discussion, only favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Opposed.
No.
Okay. It's three to two.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Drew, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Drew.
Thanks, Drew.
Nice. Have a good night.
Best night of your life.
Go disc golf. Okay, so, um, okay, so what's on our warrant?
Solar energy.
Solar energy, all right, so, okay. Just a, a brief reminder, um, let's go back to new business, zoning amendments proposed for May twenty twenty-three town meeting. We already looked at the correspondence from the Town Manager's Office. The next one is, oh my gosh, who wrote this agenda item? Review and discuss current zoning regulations pertaining to solar energy systems. Recently submitted amendments to the zoning bylaw for solar energy and contemplate amendment pathways that are consistent with Mash General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section three, in consideration of the Tracy Lane Second Realty LLC versus the City of Waltham case. All right, take it away.
Well, Chair had asked me to include all of the, you know, recent, relatively recent submissions to the.
Take that mic right up to you.
To the select board.
Real, real close, like bring it in.
Karen? The fact is, the phone's far away, so I'm just gonna be low.
He, she won't hear, it really has to, just push it in, like this.
Can you hear me, Karen?
Say it again.
This is gonna be a struggle. I don't want to scream.
No, you have, if you just bring it really close in like that.
Oh, no. So the Chair had asked me to provide again in your packet, the recently submitted zoning bylaw articles that have gone to the select boards, submitted by the Planning Board about two or three years ago for solar energy systems. Additionally, it includes the petition articles that have gone to, the petition articles that were filed for town meeting consideration to establish a solar energy system overlay district. Again, as a reminder, Chapter forty-eight, Section three prohibits the town from unreasonably regulating solar energy systems throughout the town. That was affirmed by a recent land, recent court case, Tracer Lane to the City of Waltham, which essentially stated that restricting the use to only a single district, which in this case in Mashpee would be, only the industrial district that constitutes a small amount of the land area of the town. In the case of Waltham, it was two percent. In the case of, I had done this calculation, and now I didn't bring it with me, and I forgot, but it's a very small figure. Mashpee is in a very similar situation to the City of Waltham, and it's been advised by council that it would be prudent for the board to reevaluate its provisions for solar energy systems to be consistent with Chapter forty-eight, Section three. So there are options before you. I think the board hasn't really taken a firm position one way or the other on where they, you'd like to go policy-wise, so that's kind of where we stand. I, I, I'm not sure exactly what else you'd like me to fill the board in on, Mary, but that's where things are.
So I think we should try to submit something. I think we've had this in our packet several times. I think we should try to, um, work on.
Can I ask you a few questions, Evan, that you might know?
Yeah.
Okay, I, it's very, very liberal, and that Waltham case has brought about this liberalness. The small scale and the roof mounted are by right, but the medium and the large scale are special permit, and that's in every zoning district, right?
The existing condition is that medium and large scale are not allowed in any zoning district except the industrial districts, whereas it can be approved without a special permit, just, it would require site plan review by the Site Plan Review Committee.
So general provision A passed, right? Didn't something pass town meeting?
Yes, we currently allow small ground, small-scale ground-mounted solar energy systems throughout the town.
Right, right.
So general, all right, so now we're talking about medium and large.
That's correct.
And I support them in the commercial districts, C-one, C-two, C-three, and I-one, but not any of the residential districts. I think if there's a residential property that's interested, they need to come and do that overlay.
I agree with you, Mary. Holy heart.
So I think what we should do is, yeah.
We don't want to turn this town, I mean, if you drive on one fifty-one and you see that solar array at the Barn School Fairgrounds, that doesn't look nice at all. There should be a huge tree barrier in front of that, which I know they provide that here, but I think to put an R-three and R-five, yeah, has to be very special. I don't, I don't see granting that, that liberally.
So in B, so for B, I'd like to strike R-three and R-five, and then if the Town Planner gets a proposal from somebody, then, then work out that overlay piece. Do you know what I mean? Because otherwise, and this was something that the, this is what the Planning Board submitted to the Board of Selectmen, and they rejected it, and it was, I think it was because it was town-wide. It was every single area in town was gonna allow a medium or a large scale energy system.
Is that what we proposed the last time?
When we first took this up, it was a pretty liberal approach for solar, I mean, the, the performance standards you contemplated were relatively robust. I mean, hundred-foot buffers, pretty significant distance between any dwelling.
Right.
One point I'd like to just raise, when we consider things like community character and walkability and pedestrian friendliness, particularly mixes or uses in our commercial districts, solar's not a great application for, or use to achieve those goals.
Hmm.
And I just, so food for thought. I, I think the, an overlay district approach, I think, is a good approach, but there, it would probably, should be accompanied by a planning process where we identify parcels to be included in that overlay district.
Right, and it's almost like.
That's a good idea.
It's like we can add on to this. I think we need to, I, I think what we have now is not sufficient. Even though we allow them in the industrial zone, they're not, it's not a good bylaw. When you read this one, this one has, this is a good bylaw. We looked at several different bylaws, the model bylaw for the state, remember? We read different, we read different towns' bylaws, we added everything.
I very much stand by the performance standards and, and the, the framework for, for the use that we've contained, that we've built into the bylaw. It's, it's, it's the appropriateness of the use in the commercial districts that I question, especially in consideration of other goals.
Hmm. Is this the same one that you worked with the woman at the commission?
Well, we don't have, if we don't have enough, if we don't have enough land set aside, we are targets for a, a, an unregulated, right?
True, that is true, I mean, we are.
So that's why I think we need to put C-one, C-two, C-three in, so that we have.
It would certainly put you.
And, and, and if we go in front of a judge and somebody says, oh, you're not putting enough land in, we can cite that we have a housing crisis, why are we using residentially zoned land for you, for energy generation when we have a housing crisis? I think we have something to, 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 to put the finger in the dyke.
I understand, but you know, just.
Because we're gonna, I want to put this in now, and we don't have time to look at other lots right now.
We all get to vote on that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Excuse me, sir, do not be flipped with me. That's twice today.
We all get to, we all get to vote on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, whether you want it or not.
And you can talk when you're recognized, and I was talking to the planner.
Whether you want it or not.
Okay? Yeah, I know how democracy works, sir. Thank you.
Are you sure? Just ask.
Okay, you're out of order. Let's continue. Anybody have any more comments on B?
I do. Is this the, did you, the last time we brought these, you consulted with someone at the commission who was a solar expert. Am I remembering?
This was many years ago. I'd have to look at my records. I don't recall.
No, this was, this did not have anybody from the commission.
I thought you talked, I thought you consulted with somebody.
This one I built using the state model bylaw, and just taking functional performance standards, and I work for Charlie Rowley on this.
Okay, so that was before?
This was, this was quite, some time ago, and just, you know, I, I think the, I do want to caution, if, if the Chair will allow me just this one point. I think we are in a housing crisis, absolutely. But as we've gone through the comprehensive planning process, we've consumed the data, it's the, everything's driving us towards development and redevelopment of mixture of uses in multifamily and commercial districts where there's infrastructure, and telling us to stop constructing single-family dwellings in the residential districts.
I'm not gonna tell him to speak up again.
Sorry, I'm sorry, Karen. So for, for that reason, I would say it is more advantageous from a housing perspective to not utilize the land area in the commercial districts for a solar energy use.
That is a backwards, that's backwards. The commercial, the commercial properties are not zoned for housing unless you use a Chapter forty day.
Understood.
Or unless you do open space incentive development.
Understood. That's, you know, everything we've been learning in our community.
So there is no, there is no potential for large tracts of housing in commercial. We don't allow that right now.
But everything we're learning from the comprehensive planning process is driving us towards potential zoning changes in the commercial districts.
What we're learning from the comprehensive permit process is that people don't want the town overdeveloped.
That's true.
And they want clean water, and they want to retain the rural character.
All true.
Right.
We're learning, they want.
You're out of order, sir. You're out of order.
They want balanced development, balanced.
You're out of order.
You're, you're, you're summarizing is inaccurate.
So that's what, that's what the comprehensive permit is, is, the comprehensive plan is leading us to.
I just feel like it's ignoring half the puzzle, and that's all true.
But this is being driven because, not because a project proponent is here in the room.
Of course.
This is getting driven because we have a lawsuit that could give a free range to somebody who brought a proposal in.
All true, but I don't think we should do it.
The industrial, but, right, but the industrial.
Just because.
Well, that's why it's here. Your, your advice to us, and Town Council's advice to us, is that we need a zoning bylaw that allows more land to be used for solar.
Yes.
So if we do that, when we put the C-one, C-two, C-three in, we do that. And then if there's somebody, then you can go searching for, you know, other parcels that don't fall in C-one, C-two, C-three and industrial for an overlay. But I don't think we have time to do that. I want to get this on the warrant this, this season, because it makes us vulnerable for another six months if we don't bring it to May.
I'm, I'm, I have concern that as you would consider redevelopment bylaws or redevelopment potential, you're gonna end up incentivizing a use in a district where, that would be more advantageous as housing or as a redevelopment project.
We're not getting a lot of these proposals. It's, this is to protect us from a strange proposal coming in without, without us having a basic solar bylaw in place, making us vulnerable for a lawsuit. Without these, without all of these design criteria, the special permit rules and regulations, I mean, if we had this in place, and, and the performance standards, if we had this in place and a judge says, you're not giving enough land for a solar development, we at least have this in the bylaw to argue, okay, you want us to allow, be allowed to, you want somebody to be allowed to put it here, we at least have this for them to, to meet.
All right, yeah.
So there's a huge advantage of putting this in the bylaw now.
Evan, what's your?
Based on what this is talking about, I mean, I, I kind of hear what you're saying about, there's gonna be an awful lot of pressure on our housing going forward, and I, you know, I'm not, who knows what's gonna happen, but I fully expect that unless Mashpee can do something, that at some point, someone's gonna force us to do something, and that may change some of the zoning issues that we have right now. Is putting solar or approving solar in the areas that you're suggesting potentially eliminating, if there were to be a change in the future, that would be, that land would not be able to be used?
Well, I mean, it could always change. The, Mike, the concern that I have is if you allow, for example, large-scale solar energy systems in the C-one district, it just has a question. How would you all feel with the remaining undeveloped area under control of Mashpee Commons as a large-scale solar energy system?
Yeah, here you go.
I don't want any large-scale solar system in town.
You know what I mean?
But we can't, it's not an option. You, you, I mean, Town Council is saying that the land that we have for industrial is not enough. We're gonna, we're vulnerable to a, a non-regulated proposal coming in and getting granted without any performance standards or, or guidelines.
Again, true.
And.
But I think we have enough time to do a little bit of planning work and define an overlay district with, I think we have that time.
Well, why don't you do that?
We have one meeting. You can do that for October, but I want this on the warrant for May.
Why wouldn't we do it all at the same time and do it right?
Because it's not doing it wrong this way, and you're delaying it for six months.
Were you doing it?
And, and this is the first town meeting we have to get this done after that case law, and we should act quickly.
Well, no, we had October, we didn't get it done.
I think we missed that, I think we missed that deadline.
No, we had October last year, and we didn't get it done.
Not this, that, that, the, but that petitioned article was before the court case.
Right.
Since the court case, this is our first opportunity to fix the bylaw, and I think we should take it.
I don't think it was before the court case, was it?
It was before the decision, but, you know.
Yeah, it was before the decision. That was before the decision.
Yes, it was.
But, um, yeah, writing something off.
So why, yeah.
All right, so let's continue. So, so let's continue. I'm on B. How do people feel? I, I want a straw poll. You guys are all, we're all set for industrial, because it's already there. How do people feel about having it in C-one, C-two, C-three?
No.
We have five percent of our land is in commercial.
That would do it.
Fifteen percent is in industrial. So eighty is in residential.
Well, if, if you add the five percent and the eight percent, that's thirteen percent. There's no judge that's gonna balk at that. Well, if you add the 5% and the 8%, that's 13%. There's no judge that's going to balk at that. So Karen, you with me? Commercial and industrial?
I wish you on the commercial and industrial only.
John, how do you feel?
No, I'd like, I'd like to see Evan do his work first.
Dennis, how do you feel? Commercial and industrial?
Well, I don't want in residential to off.
No, I don't want it in residential.
No.
Commercial.
I don't mind a roof thing, but I don't want somebody buying two lots and putting solar panels in the neighborhood.
So you good with B, just striking out R1 and R3 and R5?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think anybody's going to put a lot solar panel in R3 and R5 anyways. You know, I think it's a mute thing.
Okay, and?
I'm a little bit uncomfortable with what's going forward. I, I mean, I think it's a big, once you do something like that, you're kind of closing the door and someone else stops.
No, you're not. I promise you, I'm not.
No, let the town planner do his job.
Please, stop the, oh God. So, Michael, so on, on B, are you fine with just striking R3 and R5? Because we're going forward with this. Commercial is 5% of our area, and industrial is 8%. That would give us 13% of our land mass covered by this. This, we're gonna, we're gonna be fine with that court case.
Wait a minute, I think you said it wrong. Commercial is 5%, industrial is 15%.
Vast majority of that's the base, though.
It's right in the regional housing strategy.
Oh, but, but, right, but a lot of that is the base.
Almost in totality. I did this calculation. I'll have to email you separately with the firm figures, but it's.
It was less than 10%.
It's very small, yeah.
All right, is it 2%?
It's floating around that figure.
All right, so industrial's only 2%, so we need the commercial in there to get to 7% to hang our hat on.
That's wrong.
And any, and any, any overlay district, the land that you're gonna, you're gonna add with an overlay district is not even going to change those percentages. I mean, you're talking about 20 acres at the most in town. So.
How do we know that?
We need this, we, because, because I know, there's not a lot of land that's vacant, that's residential, that would be used for something like this. So we have to put the commercial in. We'll never get to that percentage, even with your overlay acreage.
I don't think you need to necessarily marry yourself to a percentage, although it's a good baseline. Because the judge identifies a percentage as a decision.
I'm not going to tell him that you can't, he can't hear you. I'm not going to tell him again.
It's just that you can't, you can't regulate where it's an effective prohibition. Which is what we have.
Right. So you have, you have to go, you have to allow C1, C2, C3.
I don't agree.
Yeah, well.
Not my fault.
So, Michael, to go back to B, I'm doing a straw poll. Are you fine with just striking R1 and R3 and R5? Do you know what page I'm on?
No, I don't, because I'm just trying to think about my thought process.
Can we have Evan explain?
I'm not, right.
Why, I'm getting confused, Mary, really.
So he doesn't want commercial in there.
Why wouldn't you want?
Because.
Let me ask you, Evan. Why would, why don't you want commercial? I would think that would be a good spot on the roofs and stuff.
I mean, well, roofs, great. Parking lots, great.
All right.
But.
For a solar farm.
But to clear a large tract or redevelop a large tract that are your commercial areas where we're trying to redevelop for different uses, the solar energy use, A, has no vibrancy whatsoever. It's ugly. And they're not suitable tracts.
I agree with that, because I'd rather get industrial, get board jaws.
Right, but they say that industrial isn't enough.
I understand you guys don't want solar farms adjacent to residential neighborhoods, but their silence and our performance standards make them incredibly screened, and that's where the tracts of land are that are actually functional for the use.
Do you know what I mean? He said, that, we've been told, I mean, you can't keep flipping it back and forth.
I'm not.
You told us, we have to put more land in, that what we have now is insufficient. Well, what we have now is just industrial.
That's all true, but you're saying, don't do residential, and I'm saying that's a mistake.
And, but, but you don't have the lots for us yet, and we have one more meeting.
That's my point. I think we should allow me to do that.
And I want to get this on town meeting.
But we have one more meeting to hit May. We have plenty of meetings to hit October.
I don't want to wait six months, because we're, because the court case has been done. We have someone that we know in town that has their eye on a parcel, who's very clever at submitting things when there's a legal liability of the town. I, as, I, it's irresponsible to not go forward with this. And if we have to include C1, C2, C3, we have to. That's, it's not our decision. It's a, it's a, it's a state statute and a, and a court case. So I've already heard from you.
Yeah, from me. I mean, I don't like the C1, C2, though. I'd rather.
Right.
But we need to add land in, and we can't.
Why do we need to add land?
Because the court case.
The court case doesn't compel us to do anything.
Yes, it does. We have legal counsel saying that.
I mean, we need to reevaluate, but there's no, legal counsel isn't saying you must do this immediately.
Right, do it right.
But we're vulnerable. We had a court case. We're vulnerable if we don't act.
But why not go through an appropriate planning process to do it right?
Let him do his job.
Well, I would say.
I just want to make the board know.
This, we already went through this. All we have to do is add C1, C2, C3. We already had this. We had, we had the whole town in it, and now all of a sudden, we don't want to, we, we already submitted to the Board of Selectmen C1, C2, C3.
I think, you know, three years later, I, I would have reevaluated this then.
Well.
I'm owning it now.
We need to do, this would be irresponsible for us as a board to let this lie open for another six months. We need to add more land. We don't have any other choice but R3, R5, C1, C2, C3.
It's irresponsible to put in
No, it's not.
An amendment that's half-baked.
No, it's not. It's not half-baked. This is, this, we, we went through this for months. This is a.
Job.
Who wrote this up? You, Evan?
Which one is that?
The, uh, B.
We did.
If it says submitted by planning board at the end, that was me.
Yes.
We did this, and remember, we sent it to town, we sent it, we submitted it. We thought it was no big deal. We sent it to the Board of Selectmen, and they didn't put it on the warrant, except for the small systems. They wouldn't put the solar farm on. Remember, we had a meeting. Jack Baylen was the chair.
And they pulled it off.
Yeah, they may pull it off again. Because it's half-baked.
If I, if I may ask, what is your recommendation?
Yeah, unbelievable.
I think we should establish an overlay district with.
I'm not going for an overlay district.
So that's my recommendation.
I'm, I'm going to go for C1, C2, C3 with I.
I agree with the town planner.
Dennis's support to do that.
I agree with the town planner.
I would support Evan's.
Yes, I know.
But that's, that's just my thought.
If I could hear Evan, and if I could really hear his argument.
Well, I'm sorry, but it's been said five times. He doesn't think that, that C1, C2, C3 is a good use for solar farms. We all know that we need to increase the general land in town. Even if you added, even if you added the piece of land that was under the petition article, you still wouldn't have enough land in town to hit, hit 7%, which you only get with C1, C2, C3, and I1.
Evan, can you speak up and let Karen hear your proposal?
Can you please not talk when you're not spoken to?
Go ahead.
So Dennis, I'm looking for a decision from you. You want to go? All right.
To tell Karen, because I want to hit Karen, she was a little confused, like I was.
Karen, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Evan.
My main concern with, you know, incentivizing the development of medium or large-scale solar energy systems in the C1, C2, and C3 zoning districts is really in consideration of identified long-term priorities for development and redevelopment in those districts for other priorities like housing. And additionally, those are the districts where we're trying to incentivize via redevelopment and other strategies. A pedestrian-friendly mixture of uses that supports the housing types that we need. And to remove, to potentially incentivize the development of solar energy systems that lack vibrancy and don't contribute anything to the housing stock, I would say it would be a detriment to long-term goals and priorities when we have a more effective mechanism and meeting the minimum criteria established by the tracer lane 2V Waltham case via an overlay district. I am asking for a little bit more time to do the appropriate planning work to identify adequate parcels outside. It would likely include some parcels in the commercial districts. But I, I think that we need to look beyond this, beyond the scope of the zoning districts, because it would be detrimental to other goals that the communities identified in the comprehensive planning process.
Who, who else has, you know, with expertise, has given an opinion on this? Because you're basically saying you want those C-zone properties available for commercial development. And can't we develop, you know, redevelop, in some of these redevelopment areas we've talked about, like, you know, the Dino's, across the street from Dino's, the Polar Cave area, Zachary's area.
I mean, I think it's a.
Is that where we were talking about redevelopment? Why do we need the C development, C?
All those areas, Karen, are just commercial districts.
Because we do have a problem, and I mean, I'm just worried that, you know, you know, we're going to, we're going to run into a problem here.
You know, all those districts you just identified are commercial districts, Karen. And I think that what I asked the board was this. How, how, how would you feel about the character of the town if you drove to the Rotary and there was 100 acres of solar panels?
But there's nothing we can do about that, Evan, because there's a court case and there's, and there's a, a state statute.
No, that's what I'm saying. If you're going to do a zoning change, do it in a manner that doesn't incentivize bad development.
Do you have that case with you, Evan?
Say it again, Karen?
You have the Walson case with you?
I, I do not have the case in front of my face.
So I'd love to, I mean, I'd love to read the holding again on that.
Okay. All right, so in the meantime, B, we'll skip whether we're going to have it for R, R3, R5, C1, C2, C3, and I1. We'll continue that conversation at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any other comments on the first page under C and D? C says that your ground-mounted energy systems have to be consistent with applicable local, state, and federal regs. D is that the solar energy owner and operator shall maintain the facility in good condition. Any comments on those? All right. E, dimensional criteria. So the small solar energy systems 1 and 2, we already passed those. So here goes into the dimensional criteria for medium, large-scale solar energy systems. So have, do you guys want me to read these, or do you have any comments on them? 1 through 7 on that page?
No.
Okay. All right. Next page is F, special permit rules, application requirements. Evan, do we have a height on these?
Yes.
Okay, at 6.
5.
For the fixed tilt ground mounted, 15 feet maximum height above the grade.
I don't think we have a height maximum on the large scale.
Number 6.
On 6. E6.
Medium and large-scale solar where we just were.
Yep, I didn't catch it. Fixed tilt ground-mounted solar energy systems shall have a maximum height of 15 feet above grade. All right, F. There's 1 through 12, there's 1 through... These are just like what, what you have to do to submit a special permit?
Yes.
Okay. Anything on those on section F?
No.
No, okay.
Are they somewhat standard anyways?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we got the, we got the Commonwealth's model bylaw, and then we read like the bylaws from like seven other communities.
Right.
And just filled in what, what good ideas they had. Okay, G, required performance standards. It's the visual impact, setbacks, lighting, signage, utility connections, vegetation management, noise generation, fencing, land clearing, erosion, and emergency services. Anything on those?
I, I just hope this town just doesn't become an ugly mess with this solar stuff. So I want to make sure we have the proper vegetation.
So vegetation, all land associated with the ground-mounted solar energy system shall be covered and, and grown in natural vegetation. The height of vegetation must be managed by regular mowing or grazing so as to minimize the amount of height of combustible material available in case of fire. Herbicides, pesticides, or chemical fertilizers shall not be used to manage vegetation. To the greatest extents practicable, a diversity of plant species shall be used with preference given to species that are native to New England. Use of plants identified in the most recent copy of, quote, Massachusetts Prohibited Plant List maintained by Mass. Department of Agriculture Resources is prohibited. Management of all vegetarian areas shall be maintained throughout the duration of the solar energy systems throughout the mechanical means without the use of chemical herbicides. All right, so that's just, you're talking about something that would screen it from sight.
Well, the front, the original front part is going to be screened if you've got natural vegetation.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm thinking of something that's happening in Falmouth at 395. They're building affordable housing, as you know, nice, it's on Sandwich Road. 900 houses, and one side is completely cut down. Now, that's not going to happen here. They've got to have vegetation covering, but I really like staggered evergreens and things of that sort. We have a lot of latitude on that as planning board.
Yes, because it's a special permit.
Yeah. So, that's my main concern about the appearance of it.
So G1, visual, this is required performance standard, G1. Visual impact mitigation, the site plan for a ground-mounted solar energy system shall be designed to screen the array to the maximum extent practicable year-round from adjacent properties and residential use and from all roadways.
Maximum amount, yep, okay. So, it's subject to interpretation.
And then all required setbacks shall be left in their undisturbed natural vegetated condition for the duration of the solar energy system's installation.
What is, is it 20 years is the average length of a solar array, Evan?
That's what I've been told.
That's about right.
That's what I've heard, too.
Yes.
Karen, yes, that's what I've been told, yes.
I, I didn't hear you.
20 years is what I've been told.
Okay, that's what I heard, yeah.
All right, so that's, okay. What's the appetite for the distance to wetlands, ponds, rivers, and water bodies?
300 feet.
I was thinking 100 feet to a wetland.
Isn't that written somewhere in here?
That's a petition article. 100 feet to a wetland, 200 water body or pond, and 200 feet to a river. And that matches the Massachusetts River Act and the Wetlands Act. Does that sound good with everybody? We'll add that?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So there's three that say yes to that. I don't exactly know where you would put it. So that's, that's the first section.
Hey, I have a question on A, fencing. It does say fencing around solar arrays shall provide a minimum of 6 inches clearance between the ground and the bottom of the fence.
Yeah.
To, and have it residential fencing style to shield, you know, budding residents. Does this mean I could have a clearance greater than 6 inches? And I've seen it in many places where around solar panels, they have it about 3 feet off the ground, and they just have a. off the ground and they just have a, like a tarp-type fence that goes around and that's supposed to shield. The, the second half indicates that you need residential-type fencing, not just a tarp-
Yeah.
Suspended at six feet up or whatever.
Correct.
But does that minimum six-inch clearance, if you don't have a resident abutting you on that side, do you need a fence at all?
You would need a fence and the six-inch clearance is to allow wildlife to traverse.
I know what it is.
Yeah.
Minimum.
Should we put a maximum in there?
Yeah.
Yeah, not to, minimum six, not to exceed 12.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But how can a deer get under there?
That's a good point.
That's really for-
Rabbits.
Rabbits.
Right.
Sprolls.
But, but if you have it a maximum of 12 inch, can a 10-year-old child get under there?
There are certainly security considerations that would need to be taken into account.
So it, it, I just thought six-inch minimum, there should be a maximum, but then you don't want it having too much of a maximum either, so.
Yeah, understood.
So you think 10 inches maximum or 12 inches maximum?
You could say, you could say-
If I was a 10-year-old kid.
I'm gonna say there shall be a six-inch clearance from the ground and shall not exceed six inches.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds better. A six-inch clearance.
There shall be six inches of clearance and it shall not exceed six inches.
That's it.
Boom.
Done. Done. Don't drop the mic, we still need it. Okay. So that's, that's the first section. The second section has, is the use type, which we're not in agreement with, so we'll put that on hold. We'll just put SP in the zones where we're gonna recommend that they go for both the medium and the large scale. Now, then, everybody see that? The use, these are the use table. The next one is to see if the town will vote to amend section 17431 landscape requirements, footnote four of, of something as follows. Oh, these height restrictions that are in our lands, uh, land, is it landscape requirements?
Land space.
Thank, uh, land space, sorry. What it is, is a whole list of things that aren't regulated by the, those height limits and solar panels is another one now?
I think at the time this was written, and I don't know if I would today recommend you proceed with this particular bylaw, but the purpose was really for someone who doesn't have good solar access based on their roof's orientation to the sun, so might need to put a fixed-tilt mount on their roof, which would be an, which could potentially raise the elevation like a chimney would. So it would carve them an exception to not create a non-conformity for that purpose. But again, the flush-mounted roof-mounted panels are a byright use. I don't think I would suggest that someone should put a fixed-tilt mount on their roof.
So we're gonna not go forward with that one.
I think that's-
All right.
Well, you could, you have the caveat that you could tilt it, but you can't exceed the maximum height generally?
I think very, you know.
We're not seeing those.
Yeah, people aren't doing it.
You know, they're not putting tilt panels on roofs.
And if you have that solar access challenge, you can do a fixed, a fixed-tilt ground mount now on a small scale on your property if you have the appropriate land area. So I, I think we have a mechanism that would accommodate a property owner. If they didn't have appropriate solar access due to their roof orientation, they have another option at their disposal.
And we allow that. That was one of the things that we got passed. All right. So the next one is to see if we would allow 25 feet as the minimum lot frontage. Yeah, you have it. Because all you need to do is a road.
You just need an access, yeah.
And if, if it's bigger, then you're just clearing more of that vegetated buffer. So is that good with everybody?
Yep.
Yep.
The next one, we already approved all the definitions, right?
I need to, I need to confirm that you approved all of the definitions because I feel like because we only pursued the small scale, we only had the definitions approved that were, that pertain to that particular use and we didn't go with the full schedule. I will confirm that for our next meeting.
And that was, that, but that was by petition article, so I think it does. But, okay, y'all gonna double check?
There was, there was that, a pass of petition. Yeah, I will, I just wanna confirm, but otherwise these definitions would need to be included if you opt to proceed with this, if they are not.
Then the other ones were all the petition articles, which I think are covered in ours except for where this would apply, which we're gonna continue that discussion to next time. And then there was another petition article which had the setback to water bodies and wetlands and rivers, which we already covered. So I think that's that. Are we good?
Yep.
Given, all right, Evan, you have enough to give us a draft the next time?
I got the two on, yeah.
Right. Great, thank you.
Will you have the overlay district for the next time?
Unlikely, but I can try. I can take a stab, but I, they require a fair amount of research.
Yeah, it's okay.
If we get this on the books, we can add the overlays very easily.
I prefer to do it all at once.
All right. So. All right, that item is done. Let's see what else we got. The LCP, we're having a big meeting on the 25th.
Yep.
Oh, it's 6 o'clock.
6:00 PM reminder, it is at the library. I have a draft agenda for you to look at for tomorrow, Mary. No major updates other than we had our, our virtual workshop, 15 people attended. I'd say it was a good event. Much of the same feedback as we've been getting previously, but there were new faces there, which was great. We had 620 responses to the survey. We have closed the survey.
Wow, that's good.
So one thing, I don't wanna touch too much on this because we're gonna have a special meeting on this next week, but I'll provide you with the, some of the higher-level data. We're still conducting the analysis of, of the collection, of the data collection. But really this, the charge, what I, what I'd like to bring forth at the special meeting is A, survey findings, draft vision statement, existing conditions as amended, additionally proposed actions and implementation table to start.
Will we see that before?
I've asked that to, I've asked Weston and Sampson to provide that to me by Friday.
Okay, good.
So we'd have it before the weekend. And I have a check-in with them tomorrow, so hopefully we can get it sooner. So that, that's it on the conference plan. Next week's the big week.
So the, the survey, can you get us the survey results?
Yes.
They have like that nice survey monkey?
I can send you a link and you can go through all the answers and kind of change some of the charts and stuff. It's not great for like an analysis perspective, but it'll give you a good glimpse of what people said.
Yeah.
I'll send that to y'all tomorrow.
That's great. That's fun.
Do you, have you got any data on the age categories of those that responded on the survey?
We, we would have, yeah. I don't, I can't, off the top of my head, I, I don't know what the response demographic was, but it will be in the data. It will be in the data.
Okay. I mean, I don't know how many times you tell people to do it and ask them and ask them and ask them, but it's frustrating.
But we did, I mean, we did good at the last, remember? You had said we only hit 400?
Yeah, we, we really were. There were things that were effective, but I mean, even when we-
We pushed it out and then we got 220 more.
Yeah, when we went all out, we would, I think our best day was 50 responses a day.
Four and six hundred.
Paper, we got about 25, 20 paper responses, something like that.
Just trying to be optimistic, guys, come on. All right. All right, town planners report. Oh, oh, wait, wait. Are we gonna, can Mashpee TV film it?
I believe I asked. Chris, are we being filmed next week?
We're taping.
Taping.
Yeah. Great.
Taping, so what else?
Thank you, sir.
So yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris, yeah. I didn't confirm that with Chris yet, but-
One question, what do you want? Do you need a microphone for public comment?
I would bring everything. Because you, you know that if we don't bring it, we'll-
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm still waiting for my pizza.
Waiting for what?
The pizza.
Don't tempt him, he'll show up.
All right. Town planner report.
All right, so my office did submit a local preference request for 950 Falmouth Road, Leclerc Village, affordable housing project over in the southern part of town towards Falmouth. DHC did, did respond to the request and is approving a 70% local preference, but they did come back and say the request for a tribal preference would be a violation of fair housing laws. But they did provide a remedy, which I've discussed with the select board chair and I've discussed with the vice chair of the Wampanoag Tribe. They've essentially said if the tribe is a part, participant in the financing scheme of the affordable housing via Indian block grant funds.
Oh.
Were then required to provide that local preference.
Okay.
So for this, so they're willing to allow that after the fact. It was, it would be a post-close preference because the close, the financing has been closed on. That project will be underway relatively soon. It closed on January 6th. So I'm gonna be working with Carlton Hendricks and David hopefully on, and the housing department over at the tribe too.
Michelle Toby, Shelley Toby?
Shelley Toby.
Yeah.
So I put the bug in their ear. Ultimately, it does put the ball on the court of the tribe, but I'm gonna, I, I've stated that I'll provide them any support that is necessary to make that happen if it's something they want to proceed with. And then at the outset of all of our subsequent affordable housing projects, we'll want the tribe involved at the very outset because then in our RFPs, we can note that they'll be contributing to the projects.
Right.
And then developers can respond accordingly with that local financing package. So if, we're at the point of, I've, I've notified the tribe, we've had very preliminary discussions about how we can proceed, but that's where things stand.
You cracked the nut, congratulations.
Cracked the nut.
That's big news.
Indeed.
That's big, big news. And they could probably use that block grant in any town they wanted to.
True.
Yep, in their region.
Yes.
And that's how they could get preference.
Yes.
That is just a, that's big news.
So they, yeah, they provide, it was nice that DHC provided a remedy to our request.
That is. Who was it? Who was, it wasn't Kate, was it Margot Leclerc?
No, it was a gentleman.
Oh, Chan, Lee Chan?
I'll let you know later. I'll pull my email.
I'd love to, I'd love to know, because I'd love to send him an email. That's great news. Oh, sorry. All right, so Affordable Housing Project 209 Obanstwa.
So I had a kickoff meeting this morning with residents of the neighborhood to kind of begin that process. It was good, about as expected, if you will.
How many people?
Seven?
Okay.
And this was an identified group established by the association to meet with me preliminarily.
Oh, good, okay.
So I think in relatively short order, they've asked for a couple of things. One, they're concerned about traffic. And I wanted to start this off on the right foot, so I've already written to my boss noting that they would be interested in seeing a traffic study on the site to get an understanding of potential mitigation options before going any further. Hopefully the Affordable Housing Trust will be in a position to convene in relatively short order to authorize that traffic study so we can get, start off on the right foot.
Oh, they have some money, that's right.
Yeah. And so, and then from there, continue to work through the engagement. Their, the, the concerns they were able to articulate well were really traffic-related. And so I wanna kind of focus on that at the fore. And I've outlined to them what I'm anticipating for an approach. I discussed this with the affordable housing chairperson ultimately. I wanna start bringing in more stakeholders to kind of round out the team and then open it up to more residents of, of the project area. But it was a good start. There are, there are open-minded folks and there are also some very concerned folks. So we wanna, we wanna do right by them to see if we can't get a, a proposal on the table that will help us meet our affordable housing goals and would be a project that the neighborhood supports and is proud of. So we are underway with a lot of work to go. Regarding Aqui Highlands Tripartite Agreement, I did notify the developer of some of the conditions that are contained in his tripartite agreement in Aqui Highlands, notably annual reports to the board and a completion date of April 2022. We have had no annual reports and that project is still underway, so I've asked him to, if he's willing-
This is something we've already signed.
Yes, yes, you, that's right. It's his measure of security.
Okay.
So I've asked him to join us for the February 1st meeting to give an update and to evaluate the tripartite agreement, just so that we can ensure the terms and conditions of that agreement are being met. And if there's any adjustments that need to be made, we can discuss them with the developer. I've had no response from the developer yet. For Neseberri Cottage's Phase 3, this was the identified grading, potential grading issues. Ed has made a site visit. Ed has coordinated with his staff. They're gonna be shooting some grades soon. No final findings yet, but Ed is on that particular project and is, is underway. And then the last, lastly, the request for withdrawal from the Cape Cod Commission review for the grocery store proposal at 647 Falmouth Road, Nine Shell Back Way, previously addressed as. They have requested withdrawal from the Cape Cod Commission of that project. The commission is unable to make that withdrawal because they need to file their withdrawal with my office and you need to accept their withdrawal before the commission can withdraw the DRI. So we'll be looking, my office will be looking out for that withdrawal. I'll be looking to put it on a future agenda so that you can make a decision on that withdrawal. They've indicated in their request that they'll be hoping to refile in a different configuration. We'll see how that goes. But we've notified them of their requirement to file a request for withdrawal with, with the planning board locally so that the withdrawal process can proceed at the regional level.
You know why they would draw?
They felt that there were some insurmountable hurdles regarding access and, access to the site and some transportation challenges. So they wanted to work through some of those, some additional options. And that's it.
All right. Thank you. Board member committee reports. Cape Cod Commission, no report. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Chairman's report, I have no report. I did it under another matter. Cape Cod Commission, no report. Community Preservation Committee, we are, we have a negotiate, we have negotiators talking to the owner of 751 Main Street. There's another land parcel that I think the, the committee for affordable housing, the committee, I read in, I think in the newspaper that the committee authorized, oh no, for 9, 9 Santuit Lane, the committee authorized an appraisal, that purchase. And there's another one that Evan knows about. I wasn't in the room. I think they authorized an appraisal for another lot of land that would be for affordable housing. So that's my update. Design review.
I did not attend, but it was at, it was a contractor base. I think it was a 7,400 square foot unit at 5 Mercantile Way. And it's for lawn care, pest control, and storage vehicles. I don't know what, what happened, but it met Tuesday.
A plan review.
Plan review, review the-
Plan review, yes.
Plan review reviewed the same application, contractor base in the industrial districts. I think it was 5 Mercantile Way. Plan review recommended approval with conditions, notably there was one portion of a grading and drainage easement that collects stormwater from the, from commercial street to public way. They proposed some regrading around that detention basin. We wanted to determine and ensure that there would be no impact to the capacity to handle stormwater from the town road. So Ed's actually looking at that particular issue alongside their design engineer at the request of the board appeals to ensure that A, what's proposed wouldn't be detrimental to that easement. And if there was an opportunity to alter the proposed detention basin in a mutually advantageous manner, Ed will be working with them to accomplish that before their public hearing, which opens next week. That was the major issue of note.
Environmental Oversight Committee.
No meeting.
And the Historic District Commission.
I promise you, I promise you, I promise you.
All right, I think we're done unless there's public comment. Okay, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
I just have one, I would, I would just like to-
I accept a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to thank Evan for not leaving the town of Mashpee.
I already went and thanked him.
Yes, thank you.
I had one man coming back.
Mr. Town Planner.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
All right.